Ready, Mary Ellen? Everybody ready? All right. Everybody ready?
Yes, we are, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. This is the September 2nd, 2015 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown. We're going to begin it with the Pledge of Allegiance, and everybody is invited to join in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items for adjournment because the applicants are not ready to be heard. Number one, 2012-04 Storybook Homes, Wisconsin. Number two, 2012-02 Carlson Associates, Kings Park. Number three, 2009-05 FB4 Realty. Number four, 2015-05 Thomas Giswali, Kings Park. Number five, 773 Scholar Estates, Comac. Number six, 1135 Toomey Platt, St. James. Number seven, 280A Olivia Estates. Number eight, 1039 Guardian Gate at St. James. Number nine, 1156 Map of Open Meadows, Fort Solongo. Number 10, 2010-06 KVC Holdings. Number 11, 911A Glen Hill Northern, St. James. And number 14, 1020A Map of Katie Platt, Smithtown.
Is there anybody present on any of the matters which were just read regarding which the Planning Department is requesting be adjourned? Seeing none, motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn those matters recommended by the Department for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, none, so adjourned.
The first item on the agenda to be heard is number 12, 1062 Mill Run Estates, Comac, an extension of a performance bond. The applicant is requested to extend the performance bond for a period of two years to expire on September 25th, 2016 in order to obtain more time to complete construction and all necessary improvements. The applicant received conditional final approval for this four-lot subdivision from the Planning Board on November 15th, 2006. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $111,440 was approved by the Board and subsequently signed by the Chairman. The applicant submitted the bond monies and all related materials to the town, and the Town Board accepted a passbook in lieu of a performance bond on April 26th, 2007. Planning Board approval for this performance bond expired on September 25th, 2014. The applicant submitted a performance bond extension application on May 20th, 2015 to the Planning Department, and the application was distributed to all departments concerned for review. The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the performance bond extension request and have determined that the bond amount is sufficient to cover all remaining improvements. The traffic safety department had no comments. The Planning Department has no objection to the request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Mill Run Estates, number 1062, for a period of two years to expire on September 25th, 2016.
Sir, are you here on behalf of the applicant?
I am.
Please give your name, your address, and your relationship to the applicant for the record.
My name is James Fuller. My address is 10 Winmore Way, Centerreach, New York. I'm the president of All Island Purchase, the owner of the property.
And have you, do you have an affidavit of posting with you?
I do.
Can the please hand it in to Mr. Colato? Sir, have you heard the review just read by the Planning Department as well as their recommendation and the proposed resolution that they are recommending that we pass tonight regarding this matter?
Yes.
Are you in agreement with that?
Yes.
Do you have any questions you want to ask of anybody here?
No.
Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this particular matter? Any questions from any member of the Board on this particular matter? Seeing none, a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, in the matter of Mill Run Estates, number 1062, I move that we adopt a resolution as provided by the Department.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. That motion carries unanimously, and that resolution is adopted. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a waiver request, number 13, 1154 Fieldstone Estates, Kings Park. The applicant is requesting to modify the tree preservation and land clearing plan in order to remove seven additional trees and to waive the installation of 660 linear feet of sidewalks along the cul-de-sac Fieldstone Court for the final subdivision known as Fieldstone Estates. The preliminary map of Fieldstone Estates was approved for a 10-lot subdivision on November 6th, 2013. At that meeting, the Planning Department recommended approval of the preliminary map, but noted that the tree preservation and land clearing plan appeared to propose excessive clearing of many large trees that could reasonably be preserved. Site inspections have revealed that the rolling terrain and presence of many very large old trees contribute to the natural scenic character of this parcel and blend with the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, it was recommended that these trees should be preserved to the maximum extent possible in order to make this proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood. The Planning Department recommended that the Planning Board consider conditioning their approval on the preservation of additional trees wherever possible. The Planning Department recommended relocating some of the street drainage systems in order to preserve additional old growth trees on both sides of the proposed cul-de-sac. The Planning Board approved the preliminary map of Fieldstone Estates with condition D, which read, "A revised tree preservation and land clearing plan shall be submitted with the final application preserving as many of the large old growth trees as possible as indicated in the Planning Department's sketch dated November 6th, 2013." Following that meeting, the applicant submitted a revised tree preservation and land clearing plan dated December 4th, 2013. This proposal preserved 26 additional trees than indicated on the original tree preservation and land clearing plan dated August 28th, 2013, including those that had been in the street drainage area. On December 19th, 2013, the Planning Board found this proposal to be acceptable with the respective condition D of the Planning Board's November 6th preliminary approval, and this plan was forwarded to the Department of Environment and Waterways, who is responsible for administration and enforcement of the tree preservation plan. With this condition satisfied, the map of Fieldstone Estates received final approval by the Planning Board on May 7th, 2014. Following final approval, the applicant contacted the Planning Department and the Department of Environment and Waterways and stated that he wanted to revise the tree preservation plan. On February 3rd, 2015, the applicant submitted a new tree preservation plan. The Department of Environment and Waterways has approved this plan and stated it requires Planning Board approval. This revised plan proposes taking down 22 additional trees that had been previously slated for preservation on the revisions dated December 4th, 2013. On March 18th, 2015, the Planning Board approved the revisions to the tree preservation and land clearing plan subject to the following conditions A., which read, "In order to compensate for the loss of additional large trees and help the development blend with the character of the surrounding neighborhood, the applicant shall be required to plant eastern white pines, a minimum of eight feet tall, as street trees on Fieldstone Court." In July, the applicant submitted a revised tree preservation and land clearing plan showing the removal of an additional seven trees. The trees to be removed are a 30-inch oak, 28-inch oak, 18-inch oak, a cluster of maples, and a cluster of oaks sized 14 inches, 20 inches, and 16 inches. Site inspections have revealed that the current grading and proposed building plans interfere with these existing trees. The engineering and highway departments and the Departments of Environment and Waterways have no objection to the modification of the tree preservation and land clearing plan. The Planning Department has no objection to the waiver request, but recommends the following conditions. A., in order to compensate for the loss of additional large trees and help the development blend with the character of the neighborhood, the applicant shall plant trees totaling 126 inches in diameter on the portion of the property dedicated to the town. And B., prior to planting, the planning director shall approve the location and species of the trees. The applicant is also requesting to waive the installation of 660 linear feet along Fieldstone Court. The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the request to waive the installation of 660 linear feet of sidewalk along Fieldstone Court. The traffic safety department has no comment. The Planning Department has reviewed the request and has determined that the sidewalks are not necessary along Fieldstone Court since it is a dead-end residential access street. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that in the matter of Fieldstone Estates, number 1154, the Planning Board hereby approves the request of Donald Mangonia to modify the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by J.R. Halsmacher, P.E.L.L.C., dated July 8th, 2015, subject to the following conditions. A., in order to compensate for the loss of additional trees, additional large trees, and help the development blend with the character of the neighborhood, the applicant shall plant trees totaling 126 inches in diameter on the portion of the property dedicated to the town. And B., prior to planting, the planning director shall approve the location and species of the trees. And be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the request of Donald Mangonia to waive 660 linear feet of sidewalks on Fieldstone Court within the subdivision known as Fieldstone Estates, number 1154.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, my name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I've submitted the affidavit of posting to David Flynn. Obviously, we don't object to the waiver recommendation of the sidewalks by the Planning Department. However, we do strongly object to the second recommendation of the planning, or the first recommendation, which is, if you read part of that proposal and recommendation from the Planning Department, they talk about trees being removed, 14, 20, 16, 28, and so on. And at first, I couldn't figure out what they were talking about, but if you look at A., subparagraf A., it says 126 inches in diameter. And I couldn't figure it out, but I spoke to my client, Don Mangona, and he indicated, and it works out, that if you add up all the dimensions of the other trees, it comes up to 126 inches. However, if the Board will remember, when we filed the map at the suggestion of the town, we dedicated this whole strip of land. Within that strip of land is approximately 160, 170 trees. This is where planning suggests we plant those additional number of trees. So if you divide it out, it comes out to about, you can buy three-inch trees, it comes out to about 42 trees. The cheapest you can get those trees for is about $300, $350 per tree. They've got to be planted, and so on and so forth. It comes out to $13,000 to $14,000. But that's really not the point. It's not the cost to them so much as the necessity. Where the Planning Department is suggesting they be planted is within this thickly wooded buffer that we already dedicated to the town. And just so you get a better idea, I'm going to give...
You want this to be part of the record?
Yes.
Okay. It will be part of the record. Record to reflect four photographs handed up by the applicant's attorney of the site, or the portion of the site where the Planning Department is requesting additional trees be planted. Is that correct?
Additional trees, yes.
Correct. And this, this shows the area where they're requesting the additional trees.
That's correct.
Actually, there's five photographs.
It's a heavily wooded area. I guess that was part of the reason why the Planning Department recommended that it be dedicated to the town. Actually, I suggested to my client that we keep the property and make it part of the lots on that side, but he said, "No, I'm going to give this to the town," which he did, and which is very heavily wooded. It makes no sense to put additional trees there.
Well, the photographs that you've handed up, the five photographs, those, that shows the area where the trees are going to be removed, the additional seven trees that you want to be allowed to remove, or have those trees already been removed?
No, those trees are what exists at the present time. They're not necessarily...
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is the, what's before us now is a request to modify the plan to remove additional seven trees. Are those additional seven trees shown in that area there? That's in the photographs?
No, they're outside of that area.
Okay.
They're actually on the lots.
Okay.
And they basically have to be removed either because they're within the driveway area, one or two are too close to the house. Perspective customers have looked at the properties and stated they want the trees removed because it's a dangerous situation. But the basic problem here is there's hundreds of trees in that area already. If you planted those trees, they wouldn't grow. They'd be below the tree line of the larger trees that have probably been there for 100 years. So it absolutely doesn't make sense to plant more trees. They'll probably die anyway. And so we're asking the Board not to follow that recommendation of the Planning Department, given the fact that there are 160, 170 trees within that planting area that we have given to the town, and there is no necessity to plant more trees there just for the fun of planting more trees.
Well, so you're asking just for permission to modify the prior tree preservation and land clearing plan, just to be permitted to remove these seven additional trees which the memo says are going to interfere with the building plans, which the total diameter is 126 inches, if your math is correct?
That's right.
Now, is there any reason, first of all, is, is that the reason that we come up with 126 inches? As we want a total of 126 inches of more trees added in?
Yes, it is.
And is that your recommendation, regardless of how many trees it is and how many, or how wide the trees are? For example, from, you could have four trees of 30-inch, obviously, these are big trees, but, or you could have, let's say, six-inch trees planted, or three-inch trees planted. And if you planted six-inch trees, you could get away with much fewer trees than three-inch trees.
That's true.
So does it make a difference, really, what the total is as opposed to the number of trees that you want to have replanted to replace the seven that he's taken out?
I don't know how to answer that. There are two ways to look at it. I think Mr. Tramarko brought up a good point. It's standard practice in our town and many towns to try to improve the ecology or maintain the ecology, to try to replace, for every tree removed, to plant a tree. But he brings up the point that the area to plant them in already has many trees in it. So it was, it was difficult for us to try to figure out how to be consistent with earlier recommendations, just sort of generally, you know, over the years. I don't have a good answer. I mean, I certainly am sympathetic. It seems to be a waste to plant trees in the woods.
Well, I mean, that really depends on where you're going to plant them, but, you know, everybody is for preserving the ecology, but we also have to use common sense.
Right.
And to me, if you just have a figure of 126 inches, to me, that figure in itself doesn't really necessarily get you or anybody else where we want to be. To me, it's the number of trees that are going to be replanted, regardless of whether it adds up to 126 inches.
Sure.
Or 100 inches, or 30 inches. So I guess, would you be willing to, assuming Mr. Tramarko was willing, sit down with him and modify your recommendation, perhaps, to something that, that he would be able to live with?
Absolutely.
Mr. Tramarko, would you be willing to meet with Mr. Flynn and perhaps see if something could be worked out with respect to the additional trees, if any, that are going to be replanted in exchange for us allowing the plan to be modified to take down the seven trees you want to take down? Maybe it doesn't have to be 126 inches. Maybe it only has to be seven more trees to replace the seven you're taking down. Maybe 14 trees, but that's between you and him.
May I make a suggestion?
That would be fine. I just want to indicate one thing. Anything larger than three-inch caliper becomes a monumental task to plant. So that's why we use the three-inch...
Yeah, I understand.
You can't take a 20-inch diameter tree and bring it there without having, you know, big machinery.
You can have a four-inch, or a five-inch, or a six-inch, or a seven-inch. And if you had a six-inch tree, you could, in theory, based upon the way it's being calculated, plant half the amount of trees that you could with a, with a three-inch tree. Or if you had a two-inch tree, that would change the number of trees also. So my only point is that I don't think it's the total diameter of the gross inches of all the trees together. It's how many trees are going to be replanted.
I agree, and we'd be happy to...
I would make one point. I have no problem with obviating the requirement of this planting because I don't see why, why we want to put 126 inches of additional tree diameter into the woods.
Exactly.
Doesn't seem to make any sense. I leave you with one thought, and I'm not looking to burden the applicant, because once again, I'm prepared to vote to obviate any replacement tree requirement. It seems silly. If there's someplace in the town we need trees, and we are insistent on having these trees, then I would suggest they put those trees someplace else that we need them rather than in the woods. And I'm not necessarily looking to impose a 13 or 14...
You mean, put them on someone else's property?
Not necessarily on someone, I don't know. This is a piece of town property now that we're looking to put them in.
Correct.
So maybe there's another piece of town property we'd like to put 126 inches of diameter trees. And even then, I'm kind of averse to the idea of imposing a $13,000 or $14,000 planting requirement, when we're really looking at the four corners of your project. But let's not put more trees in the woods, because that's silly.
Would you have an objection to just eliminating the condition of replanting additional trees altogether? And just let him take down these seven trees? If there are enough trees left in the area where he wants to take down the seven trees that don't require additional trees to be replanted, are you comfortable with that?
I wouldn't be comfortable with getting rid of it completely, but what I would like to do, say are two things. One is, is the builder met with me about a month ago, and he's under pressure from his customers to try to get the houses constructed. So I think he'd like a decision tonight, and I would like to be able to help the Board come to a decision tonight.
I mean, we've had a number of trees already removed to accomplish clearing these lots for the construction of homes.
Right.
We're talking only about seven more trees.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's true.
Right. Seven more trees he wants permission to remove.
And the question is, how many, if any, are, is he going to be required to plant to remove those seven trees?
My...
Is there any proposal, Mr. Tramarko, at this point?
Yeah.
Bring it to conclusion tonight?
Well, the other thing is, I just want the Board to understand, we still have to plant street trees all along...
I understand.
All along the road.
We're only talking about this one piece of property...
Yeah.
Or one section of the property where the trees are going to be removed.
Yeah. Like David says, I don't really have a good answer. I don't really want to plant trees in the middle of the woods. So I would ask the Board to waive that condition, given the fact that there are literally hundreds of trees within an area that we gave to the town.
Before we get to anything further from the Board, first of all, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this particular matter? Yes, ma'am. Come on up, give your name and address.
My name is Katie Cardinale at 207 Cor Road. So I live directly across the street. I'm just curious where the additional seven trees are that they're looking to remove. I don't...
They're in various places throughout the subdivision. If you look on the map, I believe they're, they're circled there.
Oh, okay.
This is the proposed subdivision.
All right.
And they're there.
No, that answered my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Five of those circles contain one tree, and one circle contains three trees, and that's the total.
And the replanted trees, the proposed replanted trees, would be in the section to the far right there? That's being dedicated to the town?
Correct. Yes.
Actually, four circles have a tree, and one circle has three.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, my suggestion would be is to approve it subject to planting seven trees in a location to be acceptable to the applicant and the Board.
Within the subdivision, though?
Correct.
Yeah, not just anywhere.
Correct.
Mr. Tramarko, you okay with that?
It's a deal.
All right. So with that being said, then I think what we're going to do is we're going to have a motion to adopt the resolution as read but modified to eliminate condition A and substitute that, in order to, language that says, "In order to compensate for the loss of additional large trees and help the development blend in with the character of the neighborhood, the applicant shall plant seven trees."
Mr. Chairman, can we say up to seven trees in the discretion of the Department? Because we don't even know where they're going. What if Dave finds five good locations? Why would we be locked into seven? We have no idea where we're going with this, anyway. So why don't we say up to seven and let...
Do you have a problem with the, if, when you meet, if you want to say five, six?
Right.
The only thing, as long as it's okay with the Board.
We, we trust you.
Okay.
And the other thought is, we're not locking ourselves in, based on what you said, to 126 inches of tree.
No, not at all.
Good.
No, it's going to be, it's going to be up to seven trees, subject to being less if, in fact, the planning director agrees that less than seven can be, can be, can be planted. So that, with that being said, the resolution will be modified to change condition A to read, "In order to compensate for the loss of additional large trees and help the development blend with the character of the neighborhood, the applicant shall plant up to seven trees somewhere in the subdivision, subject to there being less than seven trees planted if the planning director so agrees."
Fine.
So with that being said, I would ask for a motion on the resolution as read and modified.
Motion. Motion to approve the resolution as read and modified.
Somebody want a second?
Chair, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. That resolution as modified, that motion carries unanimously, and that resolution as modified is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Did you hear the motion on the sidewalks? Did you hear the...
That's, that wasn't changed. Yeah, that wasn't changed. Just the part about the trees was changed. He read, he read the resolution on the sidewalk. So the whole resolution is adopted, including the sidewalks, with the tree portion being modified as we indicated.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is number 15, 1052 Map of Brookville Estates, Smithtown. The request is to waive the requirement for installation of sidewalks within the subdivision known as Brookville Estates, number 1052. The map of Brookville Estates was granted additional final approval by the Planning Board on September 7th, 2005. The applicant is requesting to waive 727 linear feet along Privet Court. The engineering and highway departments have no objection to the waiver requests, and the traffic safety department has no comments. The applicant has indicated that there are no sidewalks to connect to off Privet Court. The Planning Department has reviewed the request and determined that there are no sidewalks for Privet Court to connect to on Brookside Drive. Privet Court is a dead-end residential access street giving access to six homes. Privet Drive has been identified as a location where sidewalks are needed, are not needed, and it is unlikely that sidewalks will be needed at this location in the foreseeable future. For these reasons, the Planning Department has no objection to the waiver of sidewalks on Privet Court. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves the request of Global Homes to waive 727 linear feet of sidewalks on Privet Court within the subdivision known as Brookville Estates, number 1052.
Donald King, 75 East Main Street, Kings Park, New York, attorney for the applicant. I ask you to follow the recommendation of the Planning Department. I have some photos of the court that shows the landscaping, and it would, this would all have to be torn up if this waiver was not granted. In addition, there's no sidewalks anywhere near Brookside or for miles. It kind of reminds me of the Edgewood Avenue property where I indicated that this was a sidewalk to heaven, because it would be doing nothing. So I'd ask you to please follow the recommendation.
The photographs, are you handing them up now?
Yes.
Okay, those will be part of the record?
Yes.
And have you given in your affidavit of posting?
Yes, I have.
Applicant has handed up two documents containing two photographs on each document, as he's just described. They'll circulate them amongst the members of the Board. They'll circulate them amongst the members of the board. These will become part of the record. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this particular matter? Seeing none, any questions from any member of the board on this matter? Motion, please.
In the matter of Brookville Estates, number 1052, a move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the planning department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. That motion is carried unanimously, and that resolution is adopted.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
The next item on the, on the agenda is a final subdivision, number 16, number 1157, Map of Core at Kings Park, Kings Park. The applicant is requesting final approval to subdivide a 37,833 square foot, .87 acre parcel of land into two single-family lots. The subject property consists of one irregular-shaped 37,833 square foot, .87 acre tax lot. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the parcel into two single-family lots, a 17,856 square foot, .41 acre lot, and a 19,976 square foot, .46 acre lot. The property fronts Core Road, and each lot would have 75 feet of road furniture. The zoning requires a minimum of 100 feet. The site and surrounding area is zoned R15. There are single-family dwellings to the north, east, and south of the site. There is a residential subdivision under construction directly opposite the site on the west side of Core Road. The subdivision, this subdivision was previously presented to the planning board on December 17, 2014 to seek a recommendation from the planning board regarding the following environmentally sensitive lands, area variances that were pending before the board of zoning appeals. They were, number one, to reduce the minimum lot area due to environmentally sensitive lands; number two, to build within 10 feet of environmentally sensitive lands; and number three, to alter environmentally sensitive lands. When analyzing the variance requests, the planning department determined the applicant had overestimated the amount of steep slopes and that the two lots conformed to the minimum lot area requirements, eliminating the need for the first variance. Additionally, the applicant was able to revise the plan so that the proposal would no longer need the latter two variances. The applicant submitted revised plans on July 2, 2015. In review, in reviewing these plans, it appears that the following variances are necessary. Lot one, reduce minimum lot frontage at setback from 100 feet to 68 feet. Lot one, reduce minimum side yard width from 16 feet to 10 feet. Lot one, reduce minimum side yard width total of both from 34 feet to 26. Lot two, to reduce minimum lot frontage at setback from 100 feet to 68 feet. Lot two, reduce minimum side yard width from 16 feet to 10 feet. And lot two, reduce minimum side yard width total of both from 34 feet to 26 feet. The elevation ranges from 204 feet to 220 feet above sea level. There are approximately 5,300 square feet of steep slopes along the side and in the rear of the property that will be, not be disturbed and as a result of this subdivision. The site does not contain any wetland or natural surface water features. The depth of groundwater is more than 10 feet, and no problems are anticipated with regard to groundwater. The engineering department has found the application acceptable. Both the highway and traffic safety departments have requested that the applicant dedicate land on Lot Two, in addition to the dedication already shown for Lot One, to the town in order to provide a 10-foot right-of-way behind the curb line for Core Road. The planning department has reviewed the application and recommends denial of the lot frontage variances because they do not meet the requirements for approval set forth in Section 322-30.4A of the Town Code. Chapter 322-30.4A authorizes the planning board to grant area variances outside of a cluster development if all four of the following conditions are met. Number one, the change does not alter the density required by the zoning district. Number two, the change complies with Chapter 322-19, environmentally sensitive lands. Number three, the change would result in additional, in the addition of not more than one lot to the proposed subdivision, provided it does not alter the density of the zoning district. And number four, when in the board's judgment, the change meets one or more of the following objectives. A, there is a public purpose or benefit in changing the requirement pattern. B, the alteration, such as frontage reduction, is consistent with the surrounding lots. C, the change would preserve historically significant structures or features of the town. D, the change would preserve, protect, or promote scenic or environmentally sensitive lands. E, the alteration would protect the homeowner from undesirable land use. F, the change would reduce the amount of upgrading or clearing of the property. And G, the change would be incidental or minor and not alter the character of the neighborhood. The frontage variances do not meet Condition One. Density in the zoning ordinance is measured by lot area and frontage, and the proposal would increase the density from one lot per 100 feet to 1.3 lots per 100 feet. Also, the frontage variances do not meet any of the objectives of Condition Four. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration for the final subdivision known as Map of Core at Kings Park, number 1157. Be it resolved that the planning board of the town of Smithtown hereby denies the request of Robert Scalfo for the final subdivision known as Map of Core at Kings Park, number 1157, for the following reasons. A, the subdivision does not conform to the minimum lot frontage required for the R15 zoning district. B, the granting of lot frontage variances would increase the maximum density requirement in the R15 zoning district and therefore is not approvable under Chapter 322-30.4A. And C, the granting of lot frontage variances would not achieve any of the objectives identified in Chapter 322-30.4A4.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant, and I'm wondering... Oh, there he is. Okay. I will submit the affidavit of posting. I don't know if he has the printed form, but I'll handwrite it. He tells me the sign's been up. If it's okay with you, I'll do it after.
We're going to need to have that submitted before we go forward.
Do you have the affidavit? The only thing I could do is handwrite it. In the meantime, I mean...
We have to have proof of the posting before we can go forward on the application.
Okay. Why don't we...
But before we even get to that, while you're working on that, I just have a question to Mr. Flynn. From your review, correct me if I'm wrong, but it appears that what you're indicating in your review is that we don't have the authority under the Town Code to grant this application because, basically, Condition One is not met. And is it correct that, under the Town Code, all three of the first conditions must be met, along with one of those conditions listed in Number Four?
It's hard, hard for me to follow everything you said.
Say it again.
All four of the conditions need to be met, and it appears to us that two were not met.
Well, four, let's just take Number Four. Four appears to be a list of conditions.
Correct.
A through G. So if any one of those are met, that satisfies four. Some of those appear to be somewhat subjective. But let's look at Number One. Number One says, "The change does not alter the density required by the zoning district." So the way I read that is that if the change does alter the density, that's it. It doesn't meet the requirements, regardless of anything else. Would that be correct?
It is, but it is a little more complicated than that. I suspect that Mr. Tramarko will advance the concept that density is measured by lot area only and not by frontage as well. It's been the planning department's contention since long before I worked there that the zoning ordinance has two measurements of density, frontage and area. If you go back to the original zoning maps...
Well, does the zoning ordinance itself specify that it's measured by lot frontage and area?
I don't know. I'd have to find that out.
It would be, appear to be the key question because if it is, I mean, it should be either black and white. Either it is or it isn't. But with that being said, Mr. Tramarko, do you have the affidavit of posting?
I can prepare it by hand. I suggest that you, I think there's another case on, and then we'll come back.
We'll recall it. That's fine. No problem. And maybe you could discuss with your client the issue of Condition Number One, which appears to me to be either black and white. Either it is or it isn't. But you want to address it when you come back up?
I sure will.
Okay. Thank you. We'll have a recall on this matter, and we'll move on to the next matter.
The next item on the agenda is a final subdivision, number 16... Oh, excuse me, is a preliminary subdivision, number 17, 1148, Lots of Faith, Smithtown. The applicant is requesting to subdivide 2.53 acres into four lots. One of the lots has an existing church and school slash garage building. Another lot has the existing 4,668 square foot rectory, and the remaining two lots will be set aside for the future development of single-family dwellings. The preliminary map of Lots of Faith, number 1148, is comprised of a single tax lot fronting Edgewater Avenue, Juniper Avenue, and Mayflower Avenue, which is 2.53 acres and irregular-shaped. The property contains an existing church, the Byzantine Catholic Church of the Resurrection, a rectory, a two-story building with a school on the second floor, and garages and a kitchen on the first floor, a parking lot, and numerous accessory structures. The applicant proposes to maintain all existing structures. The church and the two-story school slash garage building will be located on Lot One. The rectory, the rectory will be located on Lot Three. The applicant is proposing to construct one dwelling on Lot Two and one dwelling on Lot Four. Lot One will have road access to Edgewater Avenue and Mayflower Avenue, and Lots Two, Three, and Four will have road access to Juniper Avenue. The sites, the site and the surrounding area are zoned R10. St. Thomas of the Canterbury Church is immediately west of the site, on the west side of Juniper Avenue. The Long Island Railroad runs along the north side of Edgewater Avenue, immediately north of the site. There are single-family residences to the south and east of the site. The site is mostly level, with elevation ranging from 65 feet to 78 feet above sea level. The site does not contain any wetland or natural surface water features. The depth of groundwater is greater than 10 feet, and no problems are anticipated with regard to the groundwater. The parcel has been largely cleared of trees, with the exception of the perimeter and a few scattered trees elsewhere. The site has frontage on Mayflower Avenue, Edgewater Avenue, and Juniper Avenue. No new street trees are proposed. All of the lots conform to the minimum lot area and frontage requirements for the R10 zoning district. However, Lots One and Three will require the following setback variances at the time of final plat approval for the existing structures. Lot One, reduce the front yard setback on Edgewater Avenue from 40 feet to 22.45 feet for the existing church. Lot One, reduce the front yard setback on Mayflower Avenue from 40 feet to 33.16 feet for the existing church. Lot One, reduce the rear yard setback from 50 feet to 22.6 feet for the two-story school slash garage building. Lot Three, reduce the front yard setback from 40 feet to 39.26 for an existing building. And Lot Three, reduce the rear yard setback from 50 feet to 16.33 feet for an existing building. The engineering department has reviewed the preliminary plans and has found them acceptable, but has asked that the additional details be included with the submission of the final map. The traffic safety department has reviewed the preliminary plans and has found them acceptable. The highway department has reviewed the preliminary plans and has found them acceptable, subject to the following revisions. Number one, the applicant must locate all drainage structures on Juniper Avenue. Number two, the existing catch basin will need to be upgraded to a new pre-cast box. The planning department has reviewed the preliminary map and offers the following comments. Number one, based on the size and layout of the site, the maximum yield appears to be nine lots. Number two, in balancing the five criteria for area variances, it appears that the benefit to the applicant outweighs any detriment to the public for the following reasons. A, the variances would not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. All of the variances are for existing structures. The front yard setbacks exist and are not affected by the subdivision. The two rear yard variances are the only ones that are created by the subdivision, and they will have no impact on nearby properties or neighborhood. B, the benefit sought by the applicant could be achieved by a method other than an area variance if it were to demolish the church, school, garage building, and the rectory. However, the church is a valuable community asset that should be maintained, and it would be a significant expense to rebuild the church and associated buildings in conformance with the zoning ordinance. C, four of the five variants are substantial. However, with the exception of the rear yard variances, the degree of nonconformity does not increase as a result of the subdivision. D, the proposed variances will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. E, the difficulty necessitating the front yard variances was not self-created because the structures existed prior to the adoption of the zoning in 1932. The need for the rear yard variances is self-created. Rect, three, the rectory was built in 1913 as a private home and became the rectory of the church in 1929. The building is thought to have been designed by Gustav Stickley, a renowned furniture designer and the publisher of The Craftsman, and for this reason is listed on the town's historical sites inventory. The exterior of the building is in excellent condition. In order to protect this resource, the planning department recommends that the building be maintained and that it not be expanded unless the expansion would be in keeping with or enhance the historic architectural features of the building. Also, to minimize the impact that the proposed rear yard setback will have on the adjoining properties, the building should not be expanded to the north or south. The following resolution is recommended for Lots of Faith, number 1148, from the Department of Environment and Waterways Pursuant to State Environmental Quality Review Act. Be it resolved that the planning board of the town of Smithtown declares itself lead agency on this matter and finds that this matter is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is classified as an illicit action pursuant to SECRE. And be it resolved that the planning board of the town of Smithtown does hereby issue a SECRE negative declaration. Determination of nonsignificance in EIS is not necessary in the matter of the application for the subdivision approval by Resurrection Byzantine Catholic Church for Lots of Faith, number 1148, for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York of the Smithtown Town Code. B, the parcel does not appear to suffer from any severe environmental development constraints, no poor soils, no high groundwater, and no unmanageable slopes. C, the small size and nature of the proposed, of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. D, the proposal appears to be compatible with neighboring land uses. E, the proposed wastewater generation on the parcel is subject to further review and approval by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services. And F, the project as proposed on the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by William Joseph Laddie, licensed professional engineer and dated March 17, 2015, provides the retention of all existing trees and natural vegetation upon development of the subject The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board of the town of Smithtown approves the preliminary maps of Lots of Faith, number 1148, subject to the following conditions. A, the final submission shall include all requirements of Section 248-15 and 248-26 of the subdivision regulation. B, the applicant shall submit with the final map a complete traffic sign detail plan and street lighting plan in accordance with Section 248-16F of the subdivision regulation. C, the final map shall show that all drainage structures will be installed on Juniper Avenue and that the existing catch basin will be upgraded to a new pre-cast box. And D, the historic rectory building shall be maintained and shall not be expanded unless the expansion is reviewed by the town historian and determined to be in keeping with or enhance the historic architectural features of the building. And be it further resolved, that his preliminary plat approval shall be valid for a six-month period to end on March 2, 2015.
Shouldn't that be 2016?
2016.
Yes.
Okay.
Donald King, 75, East Main Street, Kings Park, New York, attorney for the applicant, has indicated the church, the Byzantine church, has been there for a long time. Looking for two lots here. I go along with the recommendation of the planning department. There's not one reason why this should not be granted. Not one.
So you're, you're in agreement with the proposed resolution and the conditions that we just read?
Yes, they're fine.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? If you do, please come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and then you can be heard.
Good evening. My name is Anthony David Sardakati. I live at 70 Juniper Avenue, which is three lots down from the proposed subdivision. I basically have a question rather than a statement, and I'm sort of speaking for a lot of our neighbors. We really don't know what's going to happen with this. We, it was difficult to follow the gentleman who read that very long legalese-type thing. Is there going to be nine homes built there? Are there going to be four homes built there? Just have a lot of questions.
Mr. King, Mr. King is the applicant's attorney, and would you mind answering the gentleman's questions, which may also be questions that a lot of other neighbors have on their minds as well? as well?
If it's approved, there would be permission to build two houses. The rectory would remain, the church would remain, and the other building where they have a school would remain. But it's two houses. I talked to Father Tyler, who's the new priest there, Father Jack left for Hoboken. And it's, it's up to the bishop as to whether they even build it ever, but it's just two houses. And, and they meet the ten thousand square foot requirement in the zoning district.
Ten thousand, minimum lot size?
Correct.
Mr. King, could you just point where the two houses would be so that the audience will...
Sir, does that, excuse me. Sir, does that answer your question?
He's showing you.
He's going to show you where they're going to be. So guys, excuse me, excuse me, gentlemen, gentlemen, please, we have to use the microphone. Mr. King, could you just move that easel back a bit? And everybody has to use the microphone if you're going to speak. If you're going to speak, if you haven't given your name and address, you have to give your name and address, and the microphone can be handed around by Mr. King to anybody else who wants to speak.
One lot here, one lot here, rectory here, church, and the existing other building. That's it.
Everybody see that?
Whether they're built or not would be determined by the bishop. There's been, he will make a decision. He may say not, he doesn't want to build them. That's what I got today.
Anybody wants to come around and get a better view of it? It's over there, sir.
Good evening. My name is Lou DiBacco.
Please don't stand in front of it so that the other neighbors can see it. Please, could you give your name and address for the record?
I'll stand over here.
And spell your name. Yes.
You sure? Lou DiBacco, D.I.B.A.C.C.O., and I'm at forty-eight Juniper, basically right across the street. And, yeah, I was a little vague too. I wasn't sure. I thought there were more homes, and I didn't know which side they were going on, Mayflower or on Juniper. So it may be two on Juniper, and we're not even sure yet.
According to Mr. King, who's the attorney for the applicant, he said that the approval was given, it's going to be for two, and whether those two are even built is up to the bishop, I think he mentioned. Is that correct, Mr. King?
Yes, that's correct. How would we get a copy of that proposal?
If you want a copy, if anybody wants a copy of that, please contact the planning department staff after the meeting, and we'll make arrangements for you to go down to the planning department and get a copy.
Corinne Denier, one seventy-two Landian Avenue, Smithtown, New York. The D-E-N-I-E-R-L, first name is C-O-R-R-I-N-E. How many feet are between the existing garage school building and what will be the new property line?
Can you, anybody answer that?
Twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two feet.
That's pretty small. And that is acceptable with the building board, Department, when everybody in the town has to have really big backyards and clearances from other property lines?
Yes.
Because...
Because it complies with the requirements of the code.
So, so then, the fact that it's only twenty-two feet meets with the requirements of the code?
Doesn't violate anything, other than, if it was, we would have been, we would have been advised of that. And from the memo, it doesn't appear to be in violation of any, any of those requirements that you're mentioning.
Mr. Chairman, the woman brings up, it might be in violation of the height. As an accessory building, it's permitted in that yard, but as the...
Well, she's talking about the distance from the back of the building to the line, right, ma'am? The back of the building to the property line of the next lot?
That's correct.
That's what she's concerned with.
Right.
And the building we're talking about would be the garage building?
The garage with the school over it.
To the back of the line with the, to the lot with the rectory?
Correct.
Okay, so you've got the rectory in one location, you've got the property line, and then...
Which, once it comes divided, it, I wouldn't consider it the rectory any longer, because you have three lots the diocese could then sell off, have two other houses built. So my concern is it's not really meeting up with most of our standards with how much you, property you need between one building versus maybe another.
You mean, you mean the setback requirement?
Right.
Between the back of one building and the property line?
Correct.
Well, it doesn't appear to be an issue, otherwise it would have been raised.
I, I think, it looks like an oversight on our part. The setback is fine for a one-story, fifteen-foot-high building, but not for a two-story, and I presume the building's about twenty-five feet.
Do we know how tall it is?
I don't, but a two-story building is going to be at least twenty...
It's going to be more than...
It's going to be over twenty.
So is that something that you want to add additional, additional condition on?
The, this is a prelim, right?
Yes.
Yeah. It's, the variance, if the board were to approve this, the variance powers of the board are at the time of final plat approval. So there's no role tonight in granting the variance.
Right.
However, if you approve the preliminary, it sort of obligates the board to grant the variance at final, because if the final complies with the preliminary.
So then, this is still a question that we have to make sure it's all within correct compliance?
Well, if I, if I can answer or help...
Yeah, please do.
Okay. I, I think it appears to not be in compliance. It appears that the board has the ability to grant a variance at the time of final approval.
But you just said that if you approve it tonight, you're kind of obligated to prove it on the final, so...
That's right.
Wouldn't you be better off doing a postponement and have it re-looked at before you make any agreement this evening?
Well, that's, that's up to the board. I was going to say that the, the technical or the legal decision happens at final, but the way it works in New York State, if someone, if a board approves a preliminary and the final complies with the preliminary, the applicant can normally expect approval of the final.
That's what I'm saying, maybe this needs to be postponed and looked at.
I'm going to ask Mr. King, the applicant's attorney, to come back up and see if he can address your concerns.
Well, the, it's there now. It's the rectory in the building behind it, so we're going to put a line in. What's the difference? And we don't want to adjourn it. If, if we need a variance, we'll ask for a variance. I think it's silly to say that because we're creating a line between the rectory and that building, which is there forever, that we, that you're, you're going to postpone this year.
In other words, we're not, we're not changing any of the buildings.
It's there.
The buildings are not moving, the lines are, the...
The line we're, we're establishing...
Correct.
Wait, let me finish. I didn't interrupt you. If we're establishing a line, but the buildings are there, what's, what's the big deal? There's no big deal. The rectory, as he indicated, is historical. The priest is going to live there. It's not going to be a house. We're asking for two houses on ten thousand square feet.
Ma'am, are you, is your concern the line between the existing, the lot with the existing building and where the new home would be?
Well, I'm just concerned with the whole, I want to make sure I understand the whole thing.
Okay.
It's not just a case of, oh, we're putting a line in. If I own two acres of property in Kings Park that have a garage or two houses on it, and I want to separate it...
Yeah, but I understand your concern, but basically, we have the authority to grant variances if we feel the variances are warranted.
Right.
And I think what Mr. King's point is, is that nothing physically is going to be changed there. So the space that's there between the two buildings and, and is not going to change.
Well, what does, the only thing that I see that changes is it becomes multiple properties.
Well, that, yeah, but that's a different question.
And, and when you talk about how much property between the back of a building and the next property, all that is part of it. You create a new subdivision, you buy a lot, and there's not enough property from the side of a house to where the property's going to be divided.
Then you have to try to get a variance.
Right. But was a variance put in for this?
That would be something that would be done at the final.
That is separate.
Correct.
Okay. Now, the question that I have is at the final, is it predetermined, as he said, that, all right, we're just going to go with it because we accepted it tonight?
That's really a legal question.
Well, this is a question I have for the board.
Yes, and it's a legal question.
As a longtime Smithtown resident, I'd like to know.
It's a legal question, and it really depends upon the facts that are presented at the time.
Bear in mind that none of us are legally obligated to vote at any point in time in any particular direction. We could approve something tonight and then not subsequently, but Mr. Flynn's point is well-taken. If we approve it preliminarily and nothing changes, and we had no problem with preliminarily, then we should proceed with it when it reaches final. Now, I'm not taking a position on your issue, but if we do approve something preliminarily and there's no change, then I would think we would approve it at the final point. But there's no legal gun to our heads compelling us the second time the vote comes up to make us.
No, I understand that, but, but government seems to work in a certain pattern.
But I would ask, like hypothetically, suppose tonight is the final, or they're both in the same night. Is there a, an impact on the neighborhood in terms of the character by putting in the lot line? I mean...
Putting in the lot line, no. Adding the additional houses, maybe.
Yeah, but your question is about the lot line.
That's true. But it's the whole thing as a whole. It's not one particular thing.
The houses may and may not come regardless of the distance between the existing building and the new lot line.
Right. Okay. Then I just have one other question.
Sure.
Do we know for a fact that the cesspools were moved to under the parking lot? Of course, when I went to the town today, there are...
Ma'am, you, you could, you could call up when you're over there, but you've got to take the mic with you.
There are cesspools? That, were those cesspools moved?
Were, you want to know whether the cesspools were moved?
Or is that something that's contingent on the lots being broken up?
Mr. King, do you, can you answer that question?
Yes. We have Health Department approval. We're just waiting on SEACRA. And if I could have just... Take one?
Please take the microphone with you.
That means that the cesspools haven't been moved yet.
I don't know that.
Oh, okay.
What we're talking about on this, this, there's no line with respect to this house. There's no line with respect to this house. This distance is, as you indicated, pre-existing. All we're going to do is throw a line down there. This, it'd be nonsensical to deny this application because we're establishing a line for two, two buildings that are there, the rectory and that other outbuilding.
Far off, I would use the word nonsensical, but Mr. Chase, do you have a question?
Yes, I have several questions, but I, I am compelled to make a statement before doing so. Prior to two thousand and five, I and my family were members of this parish, and subsequent to two thousand and five, I have not had any contact or any relationship with the applicant or the current church administration. Accordingly, I have no vested interest in the outcome of this matter, and upon confirming with counsel, I feel that my participating in this matter would oppose no conflict. Now, that being said, and I think most people who followed my tenure on this board, I have a concern about buffering between residential and non-residential areas, and in the past have voted against certain applications because there is an inadequate buffer. Now, in looking at this preliminary plan, one of the lots is pretty much adjacent to what appears to be a concrete platform and what I believe is a bandstand. What type of buffering? And I can't help but wonder that once somebody moves into this house, once it's constructed, that there's not going to be noise complaints directed towards the town? And I'll, I'll give you a chance to answer, you know, to respond to that question, and I, and I just have one more.
I never predict the future. If I could, I'd buy the lottery. I don't know that there are band, it's a bandstand. This is residential property. It happens to be a church. It's not some other use. The church is unresidential property, that little building's unresidential property, the rectory's unresidential property, and the two lots meet the area requirement. I don't, I don't know.
We can't predict the future, but we, we can plan for the future, and I would ask you to take that into consideration. Also, I understand this is not the first time the applicant has been before us. I think there was something in the past to wave sidewalks on what appears to be Lot Four or something adjacent to that. There was also a mention that nine, there were potentially nine lots there, and it appears that the, the diocese here has been selling off property, and perhaps it would be wise to have a comprehensive site plan which would show the nine lots rather than do this piecemeal.
No, not doing that. This is an application for two lots. It's not going to be further subdivided. We should not have to spend more money. I'm looking for two lots, and I don't, I don't represent people that come back piecemeal. If, it was going to be nine lots, I'd be here for nine lots. This is for two lots, two lots only. If you guys want to put some restriction on it, that's fine.
Well, you, you yourself said you can't predict the future, but there was reference made to that there...
Not, not by me, and it's never been suggested to me by my clients. This is for two lots, that's it. That's what's before the board tonight. I don't want to do a comprehensive plan because I don't think it's the intention of the church to do more, and I got an indication today that the bishop, this bishop, does not like to sell land, so I don't even know if these houses are going to be developed.
Then I'm perplexed as to why we are here this evening.
I, that's a good question. That's what I asked today. That's an excellent question.
Well, let me ask you this, Mr. King, just to be clear. Where the potential houses would be, would be Lot Two and Lot Four, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, with respect to future subdivision, of course, we know we can't predict the future, but hypothetically speaking, would you be willing to consent to a condition that there will be no further subdivision?
I think I can do that safely because the, we, we had, we had a tough time meeting the Health Department requirement for flow. We're at, we had to, I don't think we could put another house on this property after talking with Bill Lottie, the engineer, unless he took the church down.
Well, the only reason I raise that is if you're willing to do that, that would certainly alleviate anybody's concerns about any additional houses being built.
Because the bishop runs a tight ship, I would certainly agree to that.
Or you, are you willing to do it now?
I couldn't, I couldn't represent that to you now. I mean, if, I will ask him.
I'm saying, would you be, would you be in a position to consent to a condition of no further subdivision tonight?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Without first, you know, I, I don't want to be saying to them if they took the church down...
I'm not asking you to do it. I just want to know whether or not you can.
I can't do it. I'd have to ask him.
And I don't think, and I don't think it's unreasonable for you to say you want to speak to the bishop or whoever else you'd have to speak to.
But right now, with its present configuration...
I understand.
We couldn't build another house.
Is Lot Two and Lot Four, those, those to be sold for resale for future homes, no, not used by the church?
I cannot say that. I'm not being cute. Today, when I talked to Father Tyler, he said this bishop does not like to sell property. This was a project that was started by, I believe, Father Jack, and this may not be sold. I don't know the intent here. I can't give...
So we're being asked...
It could well be sold by the church, yes.
No, I'm saying that with the way it's drawn up now, you have Lots Two, Three, and Four. So Lots Two and Four are going to be...
They're the potential, potentially...
Potential future homes. You know, if they're going to be sold, for example, if the future could be sold for resale, or if they were going to be built up or used for the church. And the other question I have for you is on Lot Three, which is still currently used for the church, would that also be part of resale or since it's going to be subdivided, or is that going to stay with the church?
That stays with the church. That's the rectory.
Well, my question is...
Okay, that would clear up a lot.
It's historical, so you couldn't, it couldn't be touched, you know?
My question is...
I'm sorry.
That would help clear up as far as some sort of setbacks, all the restrictions, if it's going to be still part of, I guess technically Lot One, which is the church.
Yes.
Well, my question, and of course, it's, it's their land, and they have the right to come to the board and ask for permission to subdivide it. My question is, if no one has any intention of selling the land, and the bishop who have My question is, if no one has any intention of selling the land, and the bishop who have to make the call is generally against selling the land, is there any purpose to us granting it without any reason for the property?
Because I asked for it. What they do is.
Well, we know that you asked for it, but my question to you is, if they have no intention of selling it, what's the point of doing it?
I don't know. But that, I don't think that's in the purview of the board's consideration. It's up to them to do what they want. When somebody comes to you for a subdivision, that doesn't mean necessarily they're going to sell it or build it or buy it.
No, but in all fairness to us, if you're gonna come forward asking for this, which it's your right to ask for, and you can't provide us with a motivation for doing it except to say we wanna do it because maybe.
Just because.
It makes us curious.
I don't think I have to give you a motivation.
Well, you do if you want us to vote for it.
No, you don't, no, I don't, because it's a 10,000 square foot lot, each of them.
I get it.
I'm absolutely entitled to this under the law. There's a recommendation by planning. I can't speak for the bishop or what his intentions are going to be tomorrow or next week or next year. That's not a consideration for the board about what's going to happen here.
Well, I disagree with you that you're absolutely entitled to it. I think this is a matter of some discretion involved. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. If you're absolutely entitled to it, we would just be submitting.
I believe, I'm absolutely, under the law, I'm absolutely entitled to it. I have to come before you because it's for a subdivision. You, I believe, if you talk to council and the planning, would be obligated to grant it.
Obligated, there are variance and reductions in side yards here. We're not obligated.
Turn it down and we litigate it, okay? I'm not getting wise with you, but.
Agreed, no, no, and I'm not trying to be.
You're overreaching here. This is 10,000 square foot lot in an R-10 district.
Well, I'm gonna say, if, obviously, if this is turned down, it's your client's right to litigate it. That would be the only remedy that they would have. So that would be their right. But my question again was, yes, they have the right to come to us and ask for a subdivision. I don't know that they're necessarily entitled to have it, otherwise we wouldn't have this process. I think there is some discretion involved in the board in granting it or not granting it. And the question I originally had was, there seems to be some concern from some of the speakers, which they may reference the thoughts of some of the other speakers about further subdivisions. And to some of the members of the community, although their opinion is important, they don't decide, we decide. If there would be a condition that it's not gonna be subdivided further, that might make some of the members of the board more inclined to grant it.
Why? If the church should have, if the church at some point wants to take the church down and further subdivide it, I can't agree to that. And I would recommend they not agree to it. You'd have to come back before the board for additional subdivision. How can you say that they're gonna be limited to these two houses? No way.
Before I raised it, you said that you might be able to agree to it, but you'd have to speak to them.
I might, I don't know that. I have to talk and see what the bishop.
Of course, of course, you'd have to speak to him, but I'm just saying.
But I would be reluctant to tell him to agree to that. Because if, let's say, at some future time, the church wants to sell the property, they have an absolute right to subdivide in accordance with the zoning ordinance.
Anybody else in the audience? Please, come up. Anybody wishes to be heard? Sir, you're there already. Come up one at a time. Give your name and address, and then you can be heard.
Hi, my name is Stan Pergar, 3 Woodview Drive in Wisconsin. I've been a member of the parish for about 30 years now. My main concern is, I know in the past, there always had to have a certain amount of property between one neighbor and the next neighbor. Now, I only did a rough pace off, but there's about 30 feet, give or take, maybe I could be as much as 10 feet off, between the side of the rectory and the back of the red brick building that we're talking about. If they get 22 feet, we got a narrow alleyway there. And we do have an outside kitchen we used to use for fundraisers. That makes that null and void right there. I just don't know where exactly the property line, I can't read those lines.
You gotta take the mic with you, sir.
What I'm concerned about, what I'm trying to get a hold of is, I don't know how much property we have here. But when I paced through it, there's a porch, and I paced it off from the porch to where there's a grill work where the refrigeration units for the walk-in there. And it was approximately 30 feet. Now, they're gonna get, they said 22 feet? They said it was 22 feet or something like that. How much distance, what I'm getting at, is between this building and their property line?
But none of that's gonna change, the buildings aren't gonna change there.
No, the buildings aren't gonna change, but where they move the property line, because there is no property line now.
There is no property line now, correct. There'll be a property line if the subdivision is granted.
All right.
Somewhere between those two buildings.
How much space are we talking here? Does anybody know?
If you look at our map, if I can interject, there is a 22-foot dimension from the existing two-story brick building appears to be to the new property line. Further up that property line, there is a 16-foot dimension from the rectory to the property line on the other side. So it would appear to be about 38 feet. And if I understand what you're saying, you paced it off and got 30 some odd feet, give or take, and I think I'm rendering 38 feet from here. So we might be talking about the same dimension. But that is the area that Mr. King, in my opinion, appropriately states. All we're doing is drawing an artificial line.
Yeah, I understand that.
If there's an alley there, it's not gonna change.
Right, I would think the greater concern here is for the setbacks between the proposed house and the rectory. On one side, proposed house, I don't even see a rear yard issue from the proposed houses to the property line.
No.
The buildings seem to be fairly neatly centered. The only question here, and Mr. Chase has expressed the concern before, is buffer. And if the buffer is an issue at all here, it is from the side of the proposed house, on one side of the rectory to the rectory, and on the other side of the rectory to the other house. Because we are being asked to reduce or recommend reducing the setback requirements.
This here, or?
Now, we're talking on the side of the house to the rectory.
My concern was here, because here won't affect us as much as here.
I agree with what you're talking about. That appears to be about 38 feet.
All right, it's a, how much is, total 38, how much is the rectory gonna get, and how much are we gonna get? They're gonna split it down the middle?
According to the drawing.
That's what I can't read.
From the rear of the rectory to the proposed property line would be 16 feet. And then from that property line to the back of the existing two-story brick building would be 22.
So it would be 22 feet from.
So the 16 and the 22 are 38. So the rectory will be closer to the property line behind it than the brick building will be. One being 16 feet, one being 22 feet, if I'm reading this correctly. But I don't know how much of a concern that really is for an artificial line drawn between two pre-existing buildings as much as the concern might be for the distance from the side of the new home to the rectory and on the other side of the rectory from there. That is, I think, the buffer that you should, and Mr. Chase is shaking his head. That is the buffer question, because you could come back, build those two houses, and have houses that are 15 feet from each other, give or take.
Right, and the rectory.
From each other, from the other, from the existing building.
From the existing, that's what I mean.
I did an onsite there the other day, to refresh my memory. And that rectory, I believe, is a three-story building?
Yeah, basically, it is.
So it's a pretty significant in height, and whatever you put next to it will be dwarfed and looked down on and in the shadows of this rectory.
I have a kind of rhetorical question for Mr. Flynn. Since we are acknowledging that we may have an error here, the building is probably more than 20 feet. If you were looking at this without that error, is there any chance the department would recommend that we not approve this? Aware of the height of the building?
I'm not sure if I understood the question. If the building were lower, if the building were in.
No, no, no.
If you knew the height of the building at the time you reviewed this, and the error was not made, would you then potentially have said, oh, my goodness, let's not do this and recommend rejection?
What he's asking you is that.
Very unlikely.
Okay.
In other words, if you had known the height of the building, your recommendation would still be the same?
Very likely, the recommendation.
Likely.
Would be the same.
Okay.
Well, I know that we have another concern too, which apparently, not aware of, being there as long as I have been, and I had some dealings with some of the property issues. We have one cesspool there right now that's mostly, according to this division line, is gonna be on the red brick building side, but the same cesspool takes care of the red brick building and the rectory at this point in time. In other words.
I understand your question.
One cesspool, two structures.
Is that gonna be a concern now? I mean, what's gonna happen now? I'm saying just draw a line, build.
It's one cesspool, two structures.
The Health Department will require new cesspools.
Right, but I think Mr. King said that they had some kind of approval already and/or would be.
Well, he just said he didn't know anything about the cesspools. That's why I'm bringing it up. The cesspool is approximately right about in this corridor, middle of this corridor.
He has received approval to move the cesspool.
Right.
That's what he said.
I understood in saying he didn't know.
Well, he'll clarify that.
He didn't know if he had started it, but I understand.
Right, he didn't know if it was actually, he didn't know if it was actually done, but I believe he said he has approval to have the both of them moved. I believe that's what he said. Mr. King, if that's not correct, please let me know.
Bill Lottie, the engineer, indicated we have Suffolk County Health Department approval, which means that we have to move cesspools, install cesspools. It will be done in accordance with their regulation. They're just waiting on a CEQA determination. They gave the okay. We spent a lot of time with the Health Department on this. So whatever has to be done is gonna be done correctly.
Anybody else wishes to be heard? Please come up. Give your name and address. You can take that out.
I will. Do you need a chair? No, I'm fine. I stand very well. Good evening. My name is Diane Stobazan. I am a 40-year resident of Smithtown. I was a 20-year parishioner of the Church of the Resurrection.
Ma'am, just please spell your name for the record.
Certainly, oh, it's a killer. First name, Diane, D-I-A-N-E. I live at 56 Broadway in Smithtown. And basically, I just have a little history on the property, being a longtime parishioner of resurrection. To the best of my knowledge, the property was a bequest by Blydenberg, donated for church or church use only, tax-free. Property served resurrection well for 38 years. Father Dan used the property for the very popular Byzantine bazaar, a biennial fair which brought thousands of visitors to Smithtown. It wholly supported the church, very popular with the community. Church was fiscally healthy, donated more money to the diocese with the exception of the cathedral. Without any warning, Father Dan was removed, stripped of his collar, and forced to retire. The property, which has served resurrection so well, was now raped and pillaged. All buildings torn down, save the rectory, which was left to deteriorate. This is well documented in various newspaper articles. The hierarchy approached the town as they had a buyer. They were informed at this time of the terms of the bequest. Since the pending sale was not for church use, it was denied. Now, here we are today with the same piece of property up for subdivision, being offered for sale, but with one major difference. Now they have violated the sacred trust of a will. The property donated so generously for church use is now being offered for sale commercially. It's supported resurrection for many, many years, raised many times the amount of money that it's being offered for, entertained visitors, used for community events. It is sad that this has even been brought before the board. St. Thomas of Canterbury and St. Andrews Lusarum are also on similar donated property. And we are deeply concerned about the precedent this potential sale sets. I don't know how anyone with a clear conscience can violate the sacred trust of a will. A little different, sorry.
That's okay.
From the heart.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wishes to be heard? Please come up to the microphone.
I think this gentleman was.
Give your name and address.
They'll work it out.
Robert Sikora, S-I-K-O-R-A, 96 New Mill Road, Smithtown. I'm here on, for two reasons. One, I am the president of the Forestwood Civic Association, which borders the church. And I am also a trustee of Byzantine Catholic Church. And I was also an altar boy for Father Dan when he was first ordained. So, you know, we have a lot of history, yes, we do. When I heard what the intention was from the board, the intention is so that the church survives. Basically, the way it was brought to the advisory board, of which some of these people have been a part of and discussed with Father Jack, was that the present rectory as it's situated is completely deteriorated. It would cost approximately $225,000 to get the building back in shape. So what was presented to the board, the advisory board of the Resurrection Church, is what happens if we have a developer, and let's see if we can sell some of the property. And at that time, we would try to put up a new rectory, which would be a smaller scale in keeping with the neighborhood. Where we got nine buildings or nine properties, that wasn't the intention. Now, like Mr. King said, we hope that 30 years from now, 40 years from now, that this church is surviving. And the way churches are going today, who knows? You know, you can't really predict the future. But the future of our church is, I wouldn't say predicated on the sale, but it would certainly help if we can subdivide so that we can gain some of the property for a new rectory so that our priests can live there again. And the existing rectory would be there, as well as another building to the right of the rectory, if you look at it face forward. The only concern that I had, or our civic association had, and I told this to Father Jack when he asked me to be a trustee, was if the present rectory building would be, have a covenant or a restriction that it would only be used for single use, single-family use only. You know, one of the things we didn't want was that it be turned into a two or three-story, a two or three-family home. So that's really what the intention is. What changes going forward, we don't know. But we do know that the bishop has told Father Jack and some of us before that he really doesn't even wanna sell the property, he wants to expand the church. But hopefully, if we are to survive, this would be something that would be in keeping with the neighborhood and would also generate some revenue for our church.
Right, and what the application is before us now, according to Mr. King, he doesn't even know if the property's ever gonna be sold.
Correct.
And given that's the case, I would presume that there's no proposed buy or proposed sale. But the application is to subdivide the property, which would leave two lots upon which houses could be built and the property sold, or vice versa.
Correct. One of the two, on each side of the rectory, one of the properties would be for a single-use family residence, and the other property was intended to be a new rectory on a smaller scale for the priest. That's what the intention was. So that's why we're coming to you with the subdivision proposal. And, you know, as a member of the civic association, I'm getting a lot of, as the president of the civic association, we get a lot of complaints from the neighbors that the present rectory, Mr. Chase, you've said you were walking through it a couple of days ago, is in total disrepair and boarded up. We do not have the money to renovate this building at all. So, you know, some of our neighbors are complaining that, what are you doing with this rectory already? I mean, it's really a nice one to the community. So this would also help alleviate that issue.
I think you're right. But you mentioned that one of the two, the intention, again, this is just the intention, is that one of the two proposed new lots would be for a new rectory?
It would be a single-family house where the bishop, the bishop, the priest would reside, yes.
But if it was gonna be for a new rectory, why would it need to be subdivided? Wouldn't that just, wouldn't that just as easily remain part of the same lot?
Well, no, you would have three separate lots. One would be the existing rectory, which would be turned into, from a developer, I understand, would turn it into another, you know, renovate the building and sell it. Then there would be another piece of property to the right, I don't know which lots there are, which would be, again, a single-family house would be built and sold. Those would generate the funds to build our new rectory.
Right, but all I'm saying is that if one of the lots is gonna be used for a new rectory, I don't know that it has to be subdivided from the rest of the lot. That's just another question for another day.
Yeah, that's the way we were, it was presented to us, so this way it'd be three building lots.
Another point is, you wouldn't necessarily have to have three building lots.
Right.
If you're tearing down the rectory, you could have two building lots and have no side yard setback requirement problems at all.
I don't think the rectory can be torn down.
Well, that's the issue, because it's supposed to be historic.
Yeah, the rectory can't, well, from what we understand, the rectory can't be torn down.
But it could be used for something else.
Because of the historical significance.
Understood, okay. I was wondering about that.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons. I mean, so again, the intention is very straightforward, we think. Now, again, the bishop, you know, could change his mind and say, don't build anything. You know, we just wanna get the preliminary approval for the subdivision, but we don't wanna build anything. We don't know.
Speaking for myself, Mr. Chairman, I think it would be a good idea for this matter to be adjourned long enough for the board members to visit the site.
Well, we'll take that up at the end, and I think there's still a few more people who wanna be heard.
Sure.
Sir, please come up.
Do you wanna make a motion for that at the end? I would tell him to obtain that motion. I'd like to find out about this request.
Michael Lanzerone, that's L-A-N-Z-A-R-O-N-E, Community Drive in Smithtown. I'm also a member of the parish of the Church of the Resurrection for a long time, 20-plus years anyway. I think the starting point, as far as I'm concerned, is that the church itself, right now, as we stand here, does not have the resources to rehab a rectory or do anything major. Right now, the priest, who is the pastor, is living probably 30 miles away, roughly, renting room in another parish. That's not a good situation. Our intent is to have a rectory here where the priest can live. How can we do that? The only way we can do that, because of our financial situation, is by selling some property to get enough money to build a rectory. That has been the conversation among the members of the parish. That's why the proposal for these. That's why the proposal for these subdivision was begun, and it's taken a long time.
So you're saying there is actually an intention or a plan?
No, 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 what I'm saying is, that's why the subdivision proposal was made with that idea in mind.
Obviously, at some point, to sell off one or two lots.
That's correct.
To raise the money for whatever purposes the church wants to use it for.
To sell off, to sell off the lot, I'll say the new lot, on which the old rectory building stands, to sell off one of the two new lots, and to build a new rectory on the second new lot.
I understand.
Okay. Now, first question, and that's the issue, it seems to me, before the board. Is there anything wrong, inappropriate, illegal, whatever word you want to use, in creating two new lots on which there could be built two one-family residences? The present property with all the stuff that's on it, whatever it is.
That's what we have before.
Being there, that's what you have.
Are we going to subdivide it?
That's correct.
To create those two additional lots.
That's correct.
On which potentially homes could be built, and potentially one or both could be sold.
That's correct. And the answer, and the question before the board, it seems to me, is, is that an appropriate request, and should it be granted? Now, having said that, are we in fact going to go ahead with the idea of selling the property, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? The, an honest answer to that, from my point of view, is, I don't know.
It's a bad decision.
The present bishop has indicated that he is not too favorable toward selling off property. My personal opinion is that that's a mistake, but I don't run things, and the church is not a democracy. He makes the decision. But, let's assume that the answer is yes. Let's assume for a moment that two new one-family houses go up, one will be a rectory, one will be a totally new house, and we sell off one of the totally new houses and the old dilapidated high-saw rectory building. I don't know what's wrong with that, and I haven't heard anything yet this evening that suggests it's wrong. What I've heard is, wait a minute, you might then want to subdivide into nine lots and build five more or six more, or whatever it is, pieces of property. I don't know of any conversation about that at all. But that would be a new proposal.
That's not before us right now.
That's not before you, would be new proposal, which you could deny or accept five years from now, 10 years from now, whatever. Now, there've been a lot of other things talked about. Is the sale legal because it may violate some codicil in a will?
But we're not.
I don't know the answer to that.
That has nothing to do really with us.
Exactly.
Because we're not involved in selling the property, we don't put conditions on it, whether we're going to subdivide it or not. If the property is subdivided, and if somebody wants to sell it, then if that is allowed by the will, it'll be allowed, and if it's not allowed by the will, someone can challenge it, and it'll be decided in the court.
And that is exactly my point.
What we have before us here is whether or not we're going to allow the property to be subdivided.
And that's my point, that that's a very, to me, that is a very simple question, and a lot of these other considerations are not before you, and if they are valid considerations, they will be settled, but not before this body. Thank you.
Before you step down, if you mind, two things you've said kind of confuse me a little bit. One, you're thinking of building the rectory, the new rectory, on one of the new lots, on the other proposed new lot, you're going to build another house that you would sell, or a property that you would sell off to be built, and you're suggesting you would sell off the dilapidated rectory building?
No, I am suggesting that that was one of the, no, what I'm suggesting is that, what I'm saying to you is, the history, the conversation within the parish.
Right.
Was that we would sell off the existing old rectory building.
Right.
Sell off one of the two newly created lots.
I'm with you, I'm with you, I'm with you on all of that. It just seemed confusing to me that you'd want to sell off the rectory building that maybe can't be torn down, and who would buy it, but that becomes their issue.
Well, that's up to the buyer and the seller.
That's right.
If anybody who was going to buy it would be aware of whatever conditions are on that, whatever limitations are on it.
Yeah, that becomes their issue.
And they would, that's between the buyer and the seller.
That's right, but all I'm saying to you is, that that was the history. What in fact will happen, what the bishop's decision will be, I have no idea.
That's the second confusing point to me, that the bishop does not want to go forward with potential development, it seems, but at the same time, we're sitting here considering allowing.
Well, it seems to me that the parishioners have their intention, but ultimately, whether their intention is implemented or not, is up to the bishop.
That's correct.
That's what I think the gentleman is saying, the parishioners or the board of the church has made a decision, or have intentions of what they would like to do, but ultimately, the final call on that would not be theirs, but it would be up to the bishop.
That's right, and I must say, there's some, there's not unanimity within the parish. Final point that I, you know, that I would like to make is that, why make, if there's no intent to build, the question was, why make the proposal now? The reason is, as far as I'm concerned, is, I don't remember when we began this exercise, but there was, we had to talk to the county about sewage, and cesspools, and drainage, and various things. We had to get surveys done, we had to submit papers, et cetera, to the board. I don't know when we began, when Father Jack, in fact, contacted somebody to say, okay, we want to do this subdivision. What I do know is, it was a fairly long time ago, and to now say, well, let's forget about this, and three years from now, when you decide you really want to sell the property, start all over, that's really an incredible burden, because then there's more delay, and it takes more time, et cetera. We've come so far down the road, that I would hope that the fact that maybe nothing would happen would not be a reason for the board simply to, you know, postpone a decision or to say no. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anybody else wish to be heard? Please come up to the microphone. Sir, I think you spoke before, but just please give your name and address again, for the record.
Anthony Sette Ducati, 70 Juniper Avenue, Smithtown. I'd like to thank Mr. Lanzerone for, and everybody else, for really enlightening the community about the history of this property. I'd just like to say one thing, and I just want to go to the issue of the size of the existing rectory. That building, that historic building, has got to be minimum 5,000 to 6,000 square feet of living space. It's a huge home. It's not in character with the rest of the homes in the area. It's two or three times the size of the house right next to it, and my concern now is, if they're going to subdivide that, are there restrictions as far as the size of a home with regard to the size of the property? I mean, can you have a 6,000 square foot home on a quarter of an acre? Or does it not call for more acreage in the town laws?
There are restrictions of that type, but the, from what I understand, you're talking about the existing rectory.
Yes, yes.
If the property, if that property is sold, then whatever person, whoever person or company buys it, will be buying it knowing the restrictions and limitations that are on that piece of property.
Okay, but as a planning board, can you subdivide that property, knowing that that house, that building, would be in violation of the town codes? Can you do that?
Well, I don't know that it would be in violation.
Well, I mean, by making the subdivision so small that it violates the building codes?
Well, that's a part of what we're being asked to consider, changing the variance requirements. The building itself is probably a pre-existing non-conforming use, meaning it was built so long ago that the law that exists today didn't apply to it at that time. Now, what we do in terms of drawing the lots around it becomes a question of how we feel about the proposal, and what we are permitted to do by law, but we can waive, in essence, one government agency or another, what the setback requirements might be, and that's part of what is in our paperwork. Whether we want to go from 40 feet in one instance to 22, we might not want to do that, and then again, we might.
Right, and I think that really touches on a lot of the concerns of the community and the neighbors. Number one, that building could very easily be turned into a multiple dwelling, because it is so big. Number two, it would be uncharacteristic of the neighborhood if the other home.
I mean, I think that that could be done or not be done, whether or not there's a subdivision. You know what I mean? There may be other limitations or restrictions on the building that would prevent that from being done, even if there is no subdivision.
Okay, I didn't quite follow that, but.
Well, what I'm saying is that it could be turned into something different, as long as it's not violation, in violation of any of the current restrictions, whether there is or isn't a subdivision.
And I think the other concern is, how these parcels are going to be used. Now, if one is going to be a rectory, that's fine. Personally, I don't see why they would need to subdivide that to build another building.
That was my question.
Yeah, why would, why would you have to subdivide that to build a rectory? It's on church property to begin with.
Right, that was my question.
Yes.
You would just need to have three lots, if you just, and just subdivide the other two, and then sell the one. If the other lot, the new lot, is going to be used for a rectory, that could be remaining as part of the existing lot.
Exactly.
But that's not how they chose to proceed.
All right. Then the other question was, what kind of buildings were going to be put on this, if they're going to be so large that they have to have variances to make this setback so, you know?
Well, that's a different question. Right now, they're just asking to subdivide, to have two, let's just use the word, buildable lots.
If and when somebody comes forward and wants to build on those lots, any proposed building will have to meet the requirements of the zoning code, and if they don't, they'll have to go for the appropriate variances. But we're not at that point yet, we're just only being asked to subdivide, to create two new buildable lots on which they can build if they choose to, but again, if and when they choose to build, whatever they build there has to meet the requirements of the code, as far as the size, the setback, and all those other requirements, and if they don't, they have to go and get a variance.
Okay, because I'm a little confused, because I thought you were granting those variances with the approval of the subdivision.
No, we're only granting the right to subdivide into four lots.
Okay, thank you so much.
Of which two will be buildable lots, of which they may build a house and sell on one, and the intention, as the other gentleman said, is to build a new rectory on the other.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, thank you very much, sir. He just needs you to spell your name, please.
Lou DiBacco, D.I.B.A.C.C.O., 48 Juniper. I just want to be crystal clear, I'm a little not understanding exactly what's happening. So the rectory that's there, that's boarded up, that's the historical property that can't be changed, or can't be touched, basically. They're going to sell that and build another rectory next to it, and?
No, nothing has been proposed.
Right, but that was, that's the intention, so.
What the gentleman who was a member of the parish there said, what their intention is.
Okay.
Is to have, first of all, they want to subdivide it into four lots.
Correct.
Okay? Of those four lots, two will be potential buildable lots. And the gentleman indicated that the intention is, or the hope of the parishioners, or some of the parishioners, let's put it that way, is to sell one of those two buildable lots to a builder, and a house be built on it, to raise money to use for church purposes.
Sure.
All right? The other buildable lot that would be created if this application goes through, it is the intention of some of the parishioners to build a new rectory on that, and then possibly sell the piece of property that the existing rectory building is on. But that's all what their intention is. That has nothing really to do with us at this point, we're just being asked to grant them the right to subdivide it into the four lots, two of which would be prospective buildable lots, one of which they may sell, and the other one they may build a new rectory on.
Okay, I just, this is the only forum where I could figure that out, because if it's an untouchable piece of property, basically, because it's historical, and that's the piece they're looking to sell off then, to build another rectory, I wasn't sure, I just, I just needed.
Yeah, they have the right to sell it if it's subdivided.
Right.
And then whoever buys it has to buy it with whatever conditions are on it.
Knowing that it's an untouchable piece of property.
Right, that is not the only lot they would have to sell. They could sell that lot with that building with whatever restrictions, but there's another lot that they can sell that's buildable, and take the money and build on the third lot, and that's what I think they're intending.
Fair enough, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Would you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Add some information?
Sure.
Just been hearing what I've heard. Number one is, just, everybody, I think, should know, the town has no code that prevents historic buildings from being altered or raised. There's a historic district chapter of the town code, but nothing is designated, so we're recommending approval, subject to keeping the historic rectory intact, but that's a recommendation in consideration of the granting of the front and rear yard variances.
Has this been given any protected status by the county, the state, or any other agency that could keep it from being torn down or significantly altered?
To the best of my knowledge, the county and the state have no laws related to private property and protecting them, other than secret, and the same with the town.
Yeah, but the condition that's in the proposed resolution just says that it shall not be expanded.
Right.
Doesn't say anything about not being knocked down, or otherwise altered, or made smaller.
This is, that's true.
So maybe that might want to be revisited.
Strengthened, sure.
A tighter condition, if that's what the intention is.
Right, our intention was, like, in essence, in regular English, if you keep the rectory, the board should grant the variances.
Right, but the, but the condition that would be, we were being asked to pass, just limits the rectory from being expanded.
Right.
Doesn't say it can't be made smaller, doesn't say it can't be knocked down.
Correct.
So maybe that's something that we need to address.
To, to, okay.
I definitely think Lot 3 would be an issue, that's something would have to be decided on that. I guess it's either historical, it's not historical, you know, it's three-story, dwarfing on lots two and four, but if it's kind of vague, I think it needs to be better defined.
Okay, I'll do what I.
Would we be preempted? Now, the mention was made that there was a will, the property was willed, and it was similar, could it be similar to what Edith Blydenberg did when she donated sweetbriar to the town? Would we be preempted or held liable if we were to make an approval while there was a codicil in effect?
To the best of my knowledge, planning boards cannot take into account private easements, covenants, and things like that.
Okay.
In coming to a conclusion. To my knowledge, the board, any planning board needs to look at the town code, the zoning ordinance.
That's a matter of if they go to sell it, that's a matter of between the seller and the buyer, and if people think a codicil is being violated, and then that has to be raised in court.
Yeah, let's take it to court.
That's my understanding.
And then the court would decide. I don't know that it would result in liability, I don't know that it wouldn't, but I would think that that issue would simply be resolved through litigation.
Correct.
I'm talking with two lawyers, but my knowledge is, is.
One more lawyer and we'll be totally confused, so.
The court cases that I've seen have kind of slapped the wrists of planning boards that tried to use private.
Our job here is to interpret the town code, and whether or not, and grant, decide whether or not to grant this application in accordance with the town code.
That's my understanding.
The title report has no covenants and restrictions with respect to this issue. I have the title report.
Thank you.
The.
I don't think Mr. Flynn was done yet.
I just wanted to let, you know, just put it into perspective, if the church wanted to sell the property, and someone wanted to subdivide it to the max, the most houses, the largest number of houses they could have here, if the church were razed, demolished, would be five. The zoning would permit 10, but because of the health department regulations, only five homes would be permitted.
You're talking about if the church, the brick structure and the rectory were all gone, for the dimensions of this piece of property, they could theoretically have five houses.
Right, if they sold it, and a developer tore down the church and rectory, and the garage with the school, and they just wanted to maximize the number of homes, the number would be five.
And in an R10 zone, they'd all have to be single-family properties?
Correct.
Okay.
If sewers were put in, the number would be 10, it'd be 10 homes. There's no, to my knowledge, there's no, there are no sewers in the foreseeable future in this area, but I just wanted to put that into perspective, where people were talking about nine lots, that wouldn't be possible. about nine lots, that wouldn't be possible in compliance with the county sanitary code. I can't remember which gentleman's name brought up the, another fact that we missed, the second thing that we missed tonight, is that planning, the planning department missed, is the floor area ratio on the property containing the rectory would certainly be much greater than what's permissible, and it may be advisable that that lot should be larger so that the floor area of the rectory is proportionate to the lot.
So with these things that, these issues that have just been addressed and been raised, do you think, Mr. Flynn, that it would be appropriate to adjourn this matter to allow you the opportunity to revise your memo and proposed resolution, especially as it pertains to Condition D, which you indicated, the intention of which is to keep the rectory as is, but doesn't necessarily say that?
I think it would be a good idea.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience who hasn't yet spoken who wishes to be heard?
Dave, if you're talking about enlarging the lot.
Karen Pergar, 3 Woodview Drive, Nessconset.
If you're talking about the lot that would, that would contain the rectory being enlarged, that would make the variances on the side yard setbacks even more severe, would it not?
The whole thing changes.
No, why, why would it, I would recommend that the other lot slide, you know, that it not be made smaller, but it slide to the north.
Okay.
I see what you're saying.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, ma'am.
I'm not used to public speaking at all.
Okay, name and address, if I may.
Karen Pergar, 3 Woodview Drive, Nessconset. My husband also is on the advisory board for the parish, and I don't know where Bob gets his information from. The last email we received from Father Jack said that the bishop denied us to put a rectory on the property, that he would continue to reside 30 miles away and no longer needed it. Therefore, is my question, how, once you give your permission for a subdivision and that is granted, what is to stop the rest of the property from being subdivided and sold?
They'd have to come forward with a different application. Right now, we're being asked to subdivide it into four lots, and as you've heard, two of those lots are prospective buildable lots, on which they may build a house on one and sell it to raise money for church purposes and build a new rectory on the other.
But they're not going to build a rectory.
If they're going to further subdivide the property, that's a whole new application that has to come with, come in, go through the whole procedure, it's a different application.
They are not going to put a rectory there, though.
That's all the questions that we were asking before, exactly why is this happening now and what is the intention, and nobody seems to really be able to clearly state.
Well, it seems to me that that's the decision of the bishop, who's not here or hasn't voiced his opinion.
Well, no, she's saying he's voiced his opinion to the extent that he has denied it.
How long ago was that?
Excuse me?
How long ago was that?
A couple of months. Father Jack, the last time he talked to the bishop, their last advisory meeting, we got the note that the rectory was denied.
Excuse me, ma'am, we're being videotaped, and I got a signal that they have to change the tape, so we're going to have to take a break right now.
Okay.
And let them change the tape, but hold your thought, we can come right back up as soon as the tape is changed and continued.
No, that was my comment.
Oh, you're finished? Okay.
That and one last thing, I know it doesn't make a difference to Mr. King and to Hillary, but it makes a difference to me. I have 30 years of sweat equity in that parish, and I want it not destroyed. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a break right now because I'm told the tape has to be changed.